Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission of Campbell, January 24th, 2023. Clerk, please give us a roll call.
Commissioner Fields.
President.
Commissioner Jane.
President.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Here.
Commissioner Crane.
Here.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Here.
Vice Chair Sizer.
Here.
Chair Bookbinder.
Present. Thank you. By way of introduction, my name is Adam Bookbinder. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Okay, so next is minutes. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections or amendments?
I'll move approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Chair Fields.
Aye.
Chair Chu.
Abstained.
Chair Ostrowski.
Aye.
Chair Craig.
Aye.
Chair Kamkar.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sizer.
Aye.
Chair Bookbinder.
Director Eastwood, do you have any communications agenda modifications or postponements to notify the commission?
None of the above.
Okay. Now, at this point, I'll open the public hearing. This is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item not on the agenda. We speak up to five minutes. Planning Commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak? Anyone online? Close the public hearing? Okay, so before we start, do we have any disclosures about the items tonight?
I disclose that I just exited the highway on the exit in question and frequently have visited that complex.
Yes, I'll mention that I, for some years, lived at the Franciscan across the street from there and have frequently been at what was the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. That said, let's begin with item one, which is PLN 2022-25, public hearing considered request of AO Architects for property located at 515 East Hamilton Avenue. I believe our presenter is Planner Daniel Fama. Would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you. This is an application for a conditional use permit to allow establishment of a health fitness center, city sports club, with late-night activities and ancillary nonlicensed temporary childcare services within the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond building located at 515 East Campbell Avenue. The project site is the shopping center that's anchored by the former Bed Bath and the current Kohl's. The shopping center was constructed under a sign architecture review permit approval that was upheld by the city council in 2004, located along Hamilton Avenue between Marathon Drive and southbound Highway 17 off-ramp onto Hamilton Avenue. The property is located within the C2 General Commercial Zoning District and the corresponding general commercial general plan line use district. Application before use for conditional use permit and has three distinct land use activities. The principal use of the proposal would be a health fitness center, which is the city sports club. That's generally broadly defined as a fitness facility that has a membership-based program orientation as opposed to a strictly class-based orientation. The activity, the proposal also includes late-night activities specifically due to the proposed 5:00 AM public opening. The city zoning code defines any activity occurring after 11:00 PM or prior to 6:00 AM as being a late-night activity. And then lastly, there is an ancillary temporary childcare services that City Sports terms their kids' club that provides childcare for gym members while using the facility. This is a type of exempt activity from state licensing requirements for commercial childcare. It is also not considered to be a commercial childcare center under the city zoning code, but it is comparable enough that staff found it as an appropriate use under a conditional use permit. All three land uses are consistent with the C2 Zone District upon approval of conditioning is permitted by the planning commission. And here we have the site layout. This shows the city sports occupying the former Bed Bath site. I know there are significant site improvements are proposed. In terms of interior configuration, the sports club would take over the vacant ground floor area that would incorporate the main reception area, swim pool, locker rooms, showers and sauna. And then on the second floor, which spans the entire building, would have the open fitness area with gym equipment and rooms for fitness classes. Several review considerations for you tonight, principally among them, traffic. So this project did trigger the need to do a traffic impact analysis under the thresholds established by the VTA Congestion Management Plan. That traffic study found that the project would result in an impact in the cumulative scenario at the southbound Highway 17 off-ramp into Hamilton Avenue. As noted in your staff report, in previous years, under a different program requirements for SEQA, this would have been a significant impact that would have typically required an environmental impact report. Actually, exactly what happened with the former In-N-Out proposal. However, under the new VMT requirements, the level of service impact is not considered to be significant under SEQA. However, still an impact that needs to be resolved through the city's CMP obligations and also consistency with the city's general plan. So to that end, staff does recommend accepting a fair share contribution towards the city's program CIP project for expanding the Hamilton Avenue off-ramp. That project is identified in the CIP and has been for several years. The city has accepted monies from previous developers and is looking to seek future grant funding to complete the project. The applicant's fair share contribution is based on its proportional impact to the volume that's anticipated off that off-ramp. That is approximately $37,000. In terms of VMT impact, this project site is within a half mile of the Hamilton Avenue light rail station, which means it's screened out and is presumed not to have a VMT impact. Similarly, under AB 2097, any project within a half mile light rail is subject to a parking requirement, so parking is no longer a consideration for the application. However, because the application was submitted prior to the adoption of AB 2097, the traffic impact analysis does include a traffic parking study in it. At this point, however, simply for references purposes only. There's noting your staff report, the council's 2004 approval did require provision of transit passes to employees, and that's a requirement that's still being carried out as part of this proposal. There are special use provisions that deal with health fitness facilities. Generally, these have to do with parking circulation and noise impacts. Given the location of the site being a shopping center, staff just feel all those requirements can be easily satisfied. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow establishment of the proposed health fitness center. And we do have the city's traffic consultant online if the commission has any technical questions on the traffic report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? If there are, let's go from this side.
I think my first question is timelines for the intersection improvements, because it sort of seems like that's the big dependency on this. I looked at the city capital improvement plan. It said fiscal year 2024 to 2026, but like any, I think a lot of my questions are going to relate to like, how long is the period in which this traffic congestion could be happening before we think it would be resolved?
Sure.
So that was my first question, and I have one more, but.
Sure. Matthew, we can have Matthew. You are the city traffic engineer. Can you speak to the timing of that project?
Right, there is a design project in the CIP for fiscal year '24, and that should, the duration should be two to three years because we have to work with Caltrans. And after the design phase, there would be a construction phase. The cumulative condition is a forecast into the year 2040. So that's the timeframe of when the full impact of the traffic, not just the projects, but the cumulative growth would take place.
So I'm interpreting that means this, when it gets really bad, is projected out to 2040. This new intersection would be done more like 2027, so we're avoiding the worst-case scenario. Is that the interpretation then?
Right, that's, we're getting ahead of the problem.
I see. Okay. And then my second question is, I know this sort of area was previously controversial about the Elephant Bar location, about In-N-Out coming there and potentially having traffic impact. I was just curious, like, how does some of these numbers on congestion, particularly on the Hamilton intersection, like, just sort of scale and momentum, like, how did it compare to the other one? Because I was under the impression that had generated a lot of the concentration last time.
The peak hour generation is less than the In-N-Out Burger application?
Like a lot less, or just? Is it an order of magnitude thing? That was.
Yeah, I don't have the exact percentage comparison at my fingertips right now.
Okay, but if I can add, I mean, the impact was similarly in the cumulative scenario. It was not any immediate impact with the In-N-Out application. In the In-N-Out application, also presented questions with potential queuing on the drive-through, backing into Hamilton Avenue, as well as turning maneuvers, people coming off the freeway trying to get to the drive-through.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for the thorough report. Those are my two questions.
Mr. Jane? Mr. Ostrowski?
What are the cumulative funds that we already have towards that $3 million in the on-ramp expansion fund?
Do you have that number, Matthew?
Right. From developers, we have 507,000, and we were awarded a grant, Measure B, grant 2.4 million.
So we're nearly there. Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, I do have a few questions here. Kind of following up on the question about the ramp. You know, and I know maybe Matthew, this is for you, and I know this came up at the In-N-Out as well, but and I did read the reports. So the ramp project is going to add a extra left turn lane when you're getting off heading south at 17 at Hamilton. It's adding an extra left turn lane heading toward Bascom. But this project, what they have in our project, the course is, you know, to the west, to the right. So how will that, how does that extra lane help us in terms of the, this project?
It improves the overall capacity of the entire intersection so that how the signal timing can be reallocated more efficiently?
Just helps the general intersection. Cars that are going, you know, at peak hours or whenever, when they're going right instead of left, I don't know how that helps, but yeah, I'm only asking because this is an area, you know, it's probably our busiest area in the city, and we have some, probably some pretty major projects in this area coming down the pipe pretty soon, so. You know, all these, we talk about this project, and we've been putting a lot of weight on that extra lane, which, you know, God knows we need. That'll be an improvement, but you know, how that helps traffic, you know, turning and going to the west off of that ramp. I remember with the In-N-Out project, it kind of baffles me a little bit, and still baffles me, but kind of putting me on the spot here, Matthew, but you know, I just don't, because it's going to come up again. We know it's going to come up with other projects, so I'm just wondering about that.
The level of service is based on the overall average delay per vehicle for the entire intersection. So however way we increase the number of lanes and lower the delay at the intersection helps.
Sure, I'm sure it will help, but. Another question I had, Daniel, revolutions for you, but so we talk about the developers' contribution of fair share. And we mentioned a percentage of the total, I think it was 1.24%, and then we mentioned a dollar amount, I think it was 37,000. And this project, of course, is, you know, the costs are going up quite a bit, I believe, during, when we were doing the In-N-Out. The traffic study, I think, had 1.65 million for that project. Now, this current study has 3 million. And that's how many, what is it, three years or four years? Maybe three years? So I guess my question is, is the developer's fair share the percentage of what the actual project will cost? Or is it a dollar amount based on our calculation right now, where we know the costs are going to be going up?
It's based on the current estimate as noted in the CIP of $3 million.
And are we lacking in that amount?
Yes.
We don't lack in a percentage of the total. That's not the way we work. That's not the way any city works, or I'm just wondering how we do it.
Fair enough. The application has a one-year approval period, so the window that we're talking is one year. So there's not going to be a significant change in capital costs now one year time. So this would be payable upon, prior to final of the project. Now, if for some reason they were unable to begin construction and they requested additional time for the city beyond just the one-year expiration date, at that point, we would probably revisit the dollar amount.
So we think construction on that, improvement projects in the, within a year?
No, no, construction of the gym.
Of the gym itself. Oh, of course, that will be, but it should be, shouldn't it be?
I'm saying that that construction is more imminent, so $3 million is not going to change within the construction window of this.
Oh, I see, yeah, but I guess I'm looking at it the other way. I'm looking at it from when the actual traffic improvement project happens. And I would think that maybe we would lock in our percentage for any developer. But I guess that's not how cities do it. You just kind of do it at the time when they're doing their project.
Or it would be years after they've opened up.
Yeah, so it'll wind up being less than, we know it'll be less than the 1.24% by the time they actually get going on that thing, but you know, as long as we're fair, as long as we're fair with everybody. And that's fine. The other thing I didn't understand exactly, Daniel, I mean, maybe this isn't, not an important point, but so we required the traffic impact analysis. Third-party traffic engineer, by the way, who pays for it? Is that the developer? African pays? So we required the traffic impact analysis, but then we have something about with the new regulations, there's no VMT analysis required. Isn't that kind of the same thing, or?
There are two different types of traffic analysis. The analysis that was triggered here was level service, so that looks at the delay at intersections. And so that is still required under a local policy and also required as part of the broader region-wide congestion management program. However, a impact to level service as seen here is no longer a significant impact under. However, a impact to level service as seen here is no longer a significant impact under SEQA. Which is, which is what normally in the past would trigger a much more extensive environmental impact report process.
So this is a little lesser of a kind of a traffic.
It's just, under the law, the impact is treated much differently than it had been before.
And how, how, how so is it treated differently?
Because had this been, and again, in and out had pretty much the same type of impact.
Yeah.
And that required a million dollar EIR. That did not happen here because the laws changed. The legislature has.
But the traffic analysis was still more or less the same.
Yes. I mean, and the idea, I mean.
Just didn't get as deep into it with the, you know, with the VNT stuff, I guess.
I mean, physically you can't expand the roadways. So that's the impetus for the reform because there's no room. Plus, we also want to create a city that's more convenient for pedestrians, not cars.
Okay.
So in a lot of ways, level service is just kind of a holdover.
Right, right. I know. Let me get people out of the cars too. So, and just one final question, just so, uh, Matthew, just to clarify. I'm trying to understand it. So we talk about the, the one mitigation being the keep clear signs. And I, and I take this, that is for traffic on El Marita, El Marita, turning left onto Hamilton. And I'm going to keep clear of the drawways for the Francisco apartments or is it for the actual Kohl's and the gym?
The keep clear, uh, the keep, keep clear markings would be on the southbound direction of El Marita. Opposite the southernmost driveway of the shopping center.
Okay. It's the shopping center. Okay. Cause I wonder what you're turning on in the shopping center. You're already past that point. So I, I guess that's other cars coming from the neighborhood. That might need that help.
Well, the queues backing up from the Hamilton, El Marita intersection might extend beyond the driveway. That's why we need to keep clear to allow folks to come out of the driveways to be able to enter onto El Marita Drive.
All right. Just get them out of the driveway. And then that, the final question, I just thought of it because again, it came up with the in and out. At the left turn lane off of Hamilton onto El Marita was a problem in terms of the in and out project. And I know, I know it was in the report for this project, but I, I think we said that that is not a problem with this project. Is that correct?
That's correct. The eastbound left turns is not a problem.
Is, is, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have several questions too, you know, from many, I guess, very. And not important question to some of that I think is questioned. First of all. Is this project going to be called LA Fitness or Club Sport? I'm a little confused as to the assessment was done for LA Fitness.
LA Fitness is the parent corporation in Northern California. They go by the name City Sports. Though they did indicate later verbally that this would be a a, a different line of city sports. There's only one or two others.
Right.
Either way, but under the city's ordinance, it's still all the same, the health fitness center.
Got it. Okay. So that's that. A question for Matthew. So for disclosure, Matthew and I actually worked together in another city early in my career. So known Matthew for some time. And I used to do highway, highway engineering. So I'm a little familiar with what's going on. Now, Matthew, I don't think the, the trip generation was big enough that this would get its own off ramp from southbound like the west, like or not Santana Road, but Westgate, actually not Westgate. What's, what's across from?
Valley Fair.
Valley Fair. Thank you. Valley Fair has its own off ramp, if I'm not mistaken, from Southbound Eight Eighty, correct?
Yeah, when they did that big remodel, yeah.
Yeah. So, so this, this, I guess is not high enough to to get the discussion going for that kind of a mitigation, right? Matthew.
But I would agree.
Okay. And then the other question that came to my mind was, I wasn't here when the, when the. I've been seeing your moments, when the in and out was coming. Thank you. In and out was, was, the discussion was going on. But when I read through the traffic report, it seems like the trips, you know, will be about a hundred more or so during peak times. But as far as the capacity of the parking lot itself, there is enough. There's enough capacity for all the activities that's happening. In this, that's proposed to be happening in this shop, shopping center, correct?
Right, right.
Okay. So this brings me to my other point about. Have we given any thought to having like an electric car charging station? You know, I know, for example, Target stores have this deal with Tesla supercharging. And they have, you know, Tesla supercharging in their parking lots and they reap the benefit of that decision. The nearest in Campbell, I don't think we have a Tesla supercharging site. The nearest one is at Santana Row. And I'm not, and when I say Tesla, I don't mean specifically brand Tesla. I'm talking about, you know, EV and electric vehicles. But the nearest one, if I'm not mistaken, is at Santana Row. And Club One, you know, reaps those benefits. Cause you know, they're, they're. Has there been any discussion as to having a electric car charging station maybe in this parking lot?
So I can respond to that. Not to my knowledge has owner or Tesla for that matter approached the city regarding that. I mean, that would be a voluntary improvement by the property owner, which is distinct from City Sports as the applicant here. I mean, generally improvement of that type would be triggered by construction of a new building, which has requirements under the building code for EV charging facilities. But just a tenant change would not create a situation where the city would be in a position to require that.
Okay. Okay. I see. So, uh, so LA Fitness is going to be a tenant. They're not buying the whole project then. You're not trying to be a master.
They're tenants.
Got it. Okay. Um, those, that's my question. Thank you.
Commissioners, is there?
I'm not going to ask questions about the off ramp. You know, but I, I will say this about, about the off ramp issue is, is that it keeps coming up. You know, every time, every once in a while it's going to come up more. And so I'd just like to recommend to planning. I, I'd love to have a clarification on what that project is going to totally be. Cause I go through that intersection from all directions all the time. And I don't understand how putting in three left turn lanes is going to work. But so maybe in the future, the planning can put together a, something for us to review that will explain what, what that's going to become. So for this, for the purposes tonight, we've probably beaten that to death. I have some questions. Maybe Daniel, you can answer some of them, but maybe you'll, maybe it's better for, for the applicant to answer them. But I have a question about how many expected employees are there going to be on site?
That'll be an applicant question.
Okay. And the, and the temp, and the other thing is, is that I'm assuming there, there's, they list three other locations in the South Bay as operating. I believe it's three because you use it as an average to average out the parking requirements. And I was just curious as to whether or not all the other three are similar. I think they're similar in size, uh, 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 whether they're all two story. Facilities. Do you, do you know whether the others facilities are similar in terms of the makeup?
Yeah. So the selection of the other facilities was done in consultation with city staff. So we did look for locations that could be comparable in terms of how they're situated, particularly shopping centers. So that the traffic and parking impacts could be easily segregated from other types of activities. That was the purpose.
Okay.
Again, just to point out again, that parking by itself is no longer a concern.
I, I understand. And we have this, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there about parking, but it's all, you know, moot from what I, from what you've said, right? Just, just as a point of, of my personal thing is like, you know, I, I realize it's all one development. And so the parking at the farthest northern park behind Kohl's is all, is all included in this. Whatever the six hundred and ten or whatever it is. And it's like, well, nobody parks there. So it seems like there, there maybe would be a better way to look at, at a, at a parking complex. A, a, a center like that where, where the, where the parking is so far away from different parts of it. That it does, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to figure it out that way. But the only other thing that was about the childcare services and I'm, I'm assuming again that. And I don't know whether you know, Daniel, whether or not they have the childcare services at the other local sports clubs in, in the South Bay.
They do.
Okay. And, and based on what I read on, it's obviously legal and in accordance with the state requirements for this temporary childcare services. So that there's not this commercial license required. I'm just, I'm, I'm curious. Maybe when I ask, I'll ask the, the applicant about it to expand on what that is. And then. Now, since, since the, the parking is settled. Uh, just for, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff to read there and I was hard to get through it all. But it's, it, it just confirmed for me that what I read in terms of all those bar charts and everything is that. The, it seems that there's, that based on, on their analysis of what they typically see at the other. Which is what they use as the other, other facilities that even though there's a technical shortage of parking in that plaza that the, they're, they're not going to be stretched, stretched, that they're well under little bit its needs. It seems like the, no more than sixty, sixty or seventy percent of peak hours. Is that, is that, is that what I'm reading in that?
I know. I actually don't remember the exact conclusions. It's been some.
It was, it was well under the, the, the limits. Is that correct?
The, the parking demand would be less than the parking supply. So there wouldn't be a problem.
Okay. I guess I read that correctly. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a few questions. So first. So what exactly is the scope of the requirement for LOS based funding? Is this, this is limited in time or scope? Is this restricted to the off ramp expansion, which is expected to be completed in twenty twenty seven? And then we're not doing LOS analysis, based analyses anymore?
Well, level service analysis is still required by the general plan and will be still required under the new general plan. And continues to be required under the state's congestion management program. So for the foreseeable future, we will be doing level service analysis.
And that the congestion management program from the state is, is that, that's not the VTA, that's Caltrans?
It's administered by the VTA. Who basically wears the hat as the condition management program administrator for the county.
Okay. It was mentioned that the operator needs to provide transit passes to. Does that mean they need to provide transit passes to employees?
Yes. So under the two thousand and four approval, both Kohl's and this location are required to participate in VTA's, what they now call a smart pass program. Basically it's a subsidized transit pass that allows the employer to purchase transit passes for their employees at a substantially reduced cost. And then the employees get a free transit pass to encourage them to take bus or light rail to work.
Yeah, thank you. And lastly, am I reading packet pages one thirty eight to one thirty nine and one forty three to one forty four correctly? In that by the city's rules, this place is critically underparked. I realize this has moved due to AB twenty ninety seven. And yet usage peaks at twenty one percent of capacity. And even considering a single zone, it appears to peak at about a third of capacity. Like that being the, the peak usage.
And that may also just reflect the current tendency.
Okay.
I mean, that's always been the challenge with parking requirements is that they're based on land use. But land use doesn't take into account the variations in commercial operations and how relatively successful they are.
I mean, we do go to great lengths to, I mean, obviously not in this case, but to require parking permits for changes in use to avoid exactly that situation, don't we?
I suppose what I was saying is that, for instance, a a restaurant of a certain size can on paper have the same parking requirement as another restaurant of a certain size. But from a practical reality of one restaurant is simply much more successful and has three hour waits. It will have a greatly different parking demand than a restaurant that's simply not as popular. And so you're going to see variations of that type. So I suppose I'm alluding to that perhaps Kohl's is not necessarily the most commercially successful. Uh, big box retailer. So its actual draw to the center is probably quite low had it been a different type of retailer.
Ah, okay. And would it be fair to say that we provision somewhat pessimistically? And that we, we plan for just in case it does better than average?
Well, parking requirements are generally on the conservative side, typically require more parking than less.
Okay, I'll go find, I'll get off my hobby horse here. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Please introduce yourself.
Brendan McMurr with. Uh, good evening commissioners and city staff. Argonaut Investments is the owner, developer of fif- uh, five hundred and fifteen East Hamilton Avenue property. And is a privately owned real estate, retail real estate company based in Marin County. We are excited to have such a great tenant, City Sports Club, ready to backfill our forty thousand square foot bacon suite. Previously occupied by Bed Bath and Beyond. We believe that our nationally recognized tenant club studio, also known as LA Fitness and City Sports. Will be a great fitness operator and amenity for the local Campbell community. And will foster a healthy lifestyle for the residents and visitors alike. We look forward to any questions you may have and are optimistic that the planning commission will agree with the staff's recommendation for approving our conditional use permit application. Thank you for consideration for our permit application request. And I would just like to say thank you to the whole city staff. You guys have been great to work with. Thank you.
Questions?
Uh, does anyone have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Kempfert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you heard my question to staff regarding superchargers? Are you open to, you know, maybe proposing?
Great question. I don't know the exact count, but I think we already have ten super, or ten EV charging stations already on the property.
I see. Do you happen to know if they're level two or level three as far as how fast of a charger they are?
Not off the top of my head. No.
Okay. Uh, the superchargers are this, are the level three, the really fast chargers versus like home chargers. Which may take, you know, several hours. Those things will take maybe hour or less than an hour. That's the difference. But I'm sure there would be a price difference to as far as providing that kind of service. But, but just in case, you know, you would be the only one in Campbell. If, you know, the nearest one are in San Jose and Los Angeles.
Okay.
Just, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Christian Fields?
Two questions. The, the, the first, he, I believe, Seafire Pharma mentioned this was like a unique location or brand or sub-brand or something for city sports. Could you expand on that anymore?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Nick Roberts. I'm with Fitness International, which is a parent company that operates LA Fitness. Excuse me. City sports clubs, a sport of sports clubs and club studio. At this particular location, we plan to move forward with our club studio brand. That's a different offering from our city sports clubs in that we have a, a higher emphasis on the studio offerings. So in our traditional club, uh, city sports clubs, you'll find selectorized freeway area, cardio area, pool, basketball. and then classes in a cycling studio and a group fitness studio. In club studio, we're building out a row of studios that are all curated classes with a Pilates studio, boxing studio, high intensity interval training studio, hot yoga and trampoline class. And then from an amenity standpoint, it's going to be a little bit more high end. And the price point for a membership is going to be a little bit higher than a traditional city sports rally fitness.
Can you like a ballpark, just like what?
Generally, right now, we're looking between 129 and 159 a month.
And that's relative to, that's what that would be at this location relative to?
Yes, it's probably going to fall in somewhere in there. And so we start and look at the demographics and see where the sales, you know, fill its, you know, equilibrium. So that's what we're planning to do.
Great, thank you. My only other question was, do you all have any concerns about the congestion impacting business?
We don't. And we've been looking at the site with Argonaut for the better part of two years. I personally have visited the site three or four times over the past six months and a couple of times over the past couple of years. We recognize the congestion at the off-ramp. But based on our experience of having seven hundred clubs nationwide and understanding the usage and the the patterns of our people and the length of time that they spend in our clubs over an eighteen hour operating time period, we don't feel that the congestion at this intersection is going to impact our business.
Great, thank you.
If you'll hold on, Commissioner Straskey, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering why there's kind of a gap in daycare in the middle of the day. Your facility.
Generally, we put our hours for childcare based off demand. So if there's demand for it, we'll we'll bring people in and childcare employees. But if there's less demand, then there you'll find that gap. So typically, we have a morning and then an afternoon and then during the day between 10 a.m. and 3 a.m. is typically our slowest hours. So we see a lot less demand for for childcare services.
Yeah, we get to like, see if you can accommodate that in some way, maybe with like reduced staff, but there's definitely a demand. It just won't be as high as what you're talking about.
Absolutely. And there are clubs nationwide where the demand is seen and will have childcare for extended periods of time from, you know, let's say eight in the morning all the way through 7 p.m. It just depends on, you know, if there's a need for it, we're there to fulfill that need because we want our members to, you know, use our clubs as much as they can.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kempfert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So how long are these classes normally? Let's say somebody signs up for Pilates or?
Generally between forty five and fifty five minutes.
Okay.
So we don't have any classes on the schedule that are beyond fifty five minutes.
Okay. And as far as pricing, I know you know, at some other club that I used to remember of there was peak pricing and then there was middle of the day pricing. Is it going to be basically the same way here?
No. LA Fitness International as a company has always looked at keeping our pricing consistent. With LA Fitness and with City Sports, the the price that you pay monthly is an all inclusive price. With, you know, add-ons for City for Kids Club and but that's really all. And for Club Studio, we're just kind of evolving into a different programming grouping. But the pricing structure is the same in that it's it's completely inclusive.
Got it. And the price range you quoted was for member or for family?
For a member. And then there are family options as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Zissar?
Yeah, just for my own notification on the childcare. So during the times that you have childcare, first of all, it's available for the employees as well as the members? I wasn't clear on that.
I don't believe it's available for the employees.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was thinking.
I believe it's just for the members.
Right. So and and you have you have childcare personnel specifically for the childcare area that are like licensed or whatever the requirement is?
There are certifications that they go through and we make sure that they're all first aid CPR certified. License, sure. I'm not sure if there's anything in particular that's a prerequisite.
But it's in accordance with whatever is required by the state, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Okay. You know, the only other thing I I had to ask about how many employees you typically have at a place like this?
Depending on the hours, it could be between twenty five and fifty employees at one time.
Okay. And then and then there was a question, there was a thing about security. I had a question just because it's a five, I know your place is open at 5 a.m. That's pretty typical. I personally have not been awake at 5 a.m. since I was thirty five and had a green, green, you know, a green time. But yeah, I know a lot of people get go there early. So so I guess the question I have is 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 I'm assuming the police reviewed this in terms of whether or not they would see any issues associated with that early an opening in that location.
They did. They didn't have any concerns, but we did include a condition of approval that should there be security issues, break-ins, assaults, that the police chief can require preparation of a security plan.
Okay, so you don't normally have, I mean, you're a big operation, you have a lot of clubs. I would assume that not all that there's sometimes maybe an issue with that early morning when it's still dark and people come down and park that there can be a potential security issue. And and how do you guys normally deal with that kind of thing?
Globally, we don't find issues early in the morning at our clubs. We we make sure with with the help of the developer and the owner that the parking lots are heavily illuminated at best times because, you know, the safety of our employees is a number one priority for us as well and our members. So we make sure that it's heavily illuminated. When we do, we do work closely with law enforcement, local law enforcement, if there are ever any issues. But we found on the whole that those morning hours, we don't we don't see too many issues.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Any other questions? One thing I just wanted to bring up that Daniel, please correct me if I'm wrong about this, but if you ever do want to expand the childcare hours, I think you would need to come back here to amend the conditional use permit. Is that correct?
No, even though they did provide restricted hours, the condition for approval allows them to provide childcare throughout their normal business day.
Ah, well, never mind me then. You guys are all set. That's all I have.
Just in case.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public here who would like to speak? Are there any people online who would like to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing. And let's start from the side.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good use. This is really a good use for Campbell, a good use for that site. We know what's going on with retail. It's kind of tougher. Probably costs the city some of retail tax dollars, I would imagine with this use, but you know, it's the reality of today. So I think it's, I think it's a good use, good project, good tenant, you know, kind of a good spot for this type of use, seems to me. That so the impact, the traffic impact, you know, there is there is traffic impact. And I think I think the problem is that no matter what projects go in that area, we're going to get intersections that are going to be F cumulative F. So with the In-N-Out project, as with this project, Hamilton seventeen and Solmar were F at the F in the PMP. And also Hamilton and Bascom. Actually, Hamilton and Bascom with the with the gym project included is F in the AM peak. With within and out, it was F in the PMP. I don't know how those differences are. And also for whatever, just a little trivia is that the the gym project, Hamilton Almerida cumulative impact is a C. Within and out, it was a C plus. So it was actually better. But but overall, definitely the impact with with the In-N-Out was was substantially bigger. I don't know how you, you know, how you equate these things. Obviously, with In-N-Out, we also had the parking and the driveway queue issues and there was a lot of different issues, but the net nutrients added with the In-N-Out project was calculated at two thousand six hundred and seventy two. For the gym project, it's calculated at one thousand eight hundred and nine. So substantial, but quite a bit less. The PMP, I guess this is weekday, two thirty eight for In-N-Out versus one seventy one for the gym project. So there's going to be an impact, but there's going to be an impact no matter what we put in there. And we, you know, that that area is going to be a traffic concern. That's why we're trying to get people, you know, onto bikes, onto light rail, carpooling and whatever, walking too. So I know, I think it's a good use, a good location, and I really don't see any issues with it other than the fact that, you know, it's going to be a crowded area there. That's the that's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also share the opinion of my colleague. I think it's a great use for the space. I highly encourage you to think about getting a a level three charger for that area. Since Tesla opened their chargers to other brands, you know, they have recently done that. So it's not just if you drive a Tesla, if you drive any kind of electric vehicle, you can go there and charge up. And it drives customers too, you know, so it's not just a inconvenience for the property owner. It actually drives business in. And so I think that would be a great way to mitigate some of the, of course, trips generate pollution, you know, but this way you're helping in that in that category as well. Otherwise, I think it's a great location and a great use.
Yeah, I echo the other commissioners. It's nice that it's a a large operation that is is doing this, I don't know, nationally, if not worldwide. And, you know, I remember a time in the in the eighties and nineties when health clubs came and went on a regular basis. They opened it then. Then it seemed to go away. So it's nice to know that, you know, they'll at least think that this will be, once you're in, that it'll be there for a long time. And I think it's, yeah, it's pretty, it's a pretty good use for that big box building. So it looks pretty nice. I personally can't work out, but you know, it'll it'll be nice to see that that filled. I actually don't have, you know, it is a busy intersection. I don't have as much problem with it as I I before I was on the commission, I was opposed to the In-N-Out thing. So because I thought it was a bigger issue with the drive-in. But I think that because of the hours and people are coming at different times to make use of it, that I can't anticipate it. It's suddenly causing more traffic problems to get there, but and they'll be coming from various different ways to get there, not just the off-ramp. So I I'm I'm you know, I'm all certainly in support of it. It's nice to hear that you have this childcare capability. That's great. And I'm definitely in favor of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Fields?
Also in favor of it, I like that it's studio oriented. I think Campbell feels lighter than some of the other surrounding cities on like having studio kind of classes. We just turned a studio fitness class into a half a pizza restaurant at our last meeting. So this nicely sort of rounds us out. I I do think we should approve this. I am not to beat it to death, but I'm concerned about the intersection long term. At some point, someone's going to want to do something compelling with fries. At some point, the elephant bar site, at some point, maybe Staples and Kohl's go away and something more, you know, traffic shows up there. Like, this seems highly problematic and it also seems strange to me that this highway expansion project, like the expansion gets us to D minus, E minus. There's probably space restrictions. There's a lot of stuff I'm ignorant on, but it feels like this is like a long term choke point. So I do not think that should affect the approval of this business, but I don't know if we've oversaid on this. I'd love to hear more about the intersection project down the road because it feels like that will probably cause us to be concerned about future development in this area and a bunch of still abandoned places. So I think we should approve this though. So that's my piece.
Commissioner Cheng?
Completely in support. Thank you.
Commissioner Straskey?
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's an absolutely wonderful use of that space and nice to have such an important health related service for the community.
Thank you. As for me, I'm glad the building will have a tenant. The applicants seem enthusiastic and experienced in this. I'm in support of the project. Speaking about something that's not directly relevant, I'm disappointed that we're still stuck with level of service based based methods of evaluation, even in a post SB seven forty three world. But that's for another time. So unless there are further comments, do we have a motion?
If I can just quickly add, I did notice that we failed to include a condition requiring that keep clear signage. So if there's a motion that could be included as well.
Just real quick, is there a is there any opposition to approving to including that?
So a question about that. So they keep, I missed that in the in the, so so there is an additional recommendation by planning to put the keep clear at the first entrance. Is that what you're saying?
The the traffic study, so the consultants recommending a keep clear marking on southbound Almerida at the southern project driveway. So that's a recommendation from W Trans. That to follow through does need to be incorporated as a condition of approval if the commission is favorable of the project.
Given that that's recommended, are there any objections to that? Okay, do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move that the CDA Campbell Plan Commission, the Commission Use Frement to Allow Establishment of Approximately Forty Thousand Square Foot Health Fitness Center City Sports Club with Late Night Activities and ancillary nonlicensed temporary childcare services, Kids Club within an existing commercial building formerly occupied by Bed Bath &amp; Beyond for property located at fifteen East Hamilton Avenue. You know, in twenty twenty two dash twenty five with the inclusion of the of the condition of the keep clear signage.
Second.
Could we please have a roll call? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Cheng?
Aye.
Commissioner Straskey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Commissioner Kempfert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Zissar? Chair Buberbinder?
Aye. And congratulations. Right. As said, the next thing on the agenda is the report of the Community Development Director.
Yes, Robbie Street Community Home Director, three points. When given the council, sorry, commission's interest on level service, so disclosure staff is working together with Public Works on applying for what's called a sustainable transportation grant. It's open up at the state through Caltrans. And the intent is to fund a Campbell multimodal plan. So to the point observed by the commission tonight, the intersections generally in Campbell are saturated. We are planning for five thousand new housing units in Campbell. As as there's new traffic into those intersections, there's no room to expand those intersections. And so broadly, the proposal would be to create a structure to build out our bike pedestrian system, other multimodal improvements and ideally a fee structure with projects come in and have impact on our broad traffic system, they pay fees and we build out our multimodal system. So we're starting work on that grant application now. And I think it's due in March. So just wanted to report that on.
What's the value of the grant?
Yeah, yeah, preliminary preliminary scope at this point with our traffic engineer, usually these studies a couple hundred thousand dollars total value. And we'll look at, usually, there's a match requirement at least of ten to twenty percent that the city would have to provide and the rest thankfully would come from the state if we're awarded.
So I had asked and because we've been talking about the intersection. And I know it comes up at council and I know it comes up. And, and I, I know it comes up at council and I know it comes up, it's come up to me before. You know, the, the whole issue of the, the, being able to actually walk or, or bike to the, the, the Hamilton station from that side of the freeway, right? And that the way it's configured now, it's, you know, you got the exits and entrance uh, uh, ramps that people have to walk across, right? It's, it's, it's not a, a very good circumstance. So i- is, is the city actively looking at a, a solution to that?
Glad you asked. I won't go too deep. It's on the agenda. Separate work plan effort. Uh, we have already applied for an O-Bag three grant uh, from MTC to fund the Ham- what's called the Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan. Uh, those pay attention to the general plan. Update within that, the, the G-PAC had recommended the creation of a Hamilton Avenue specific plan that encompassed both the east and west sides of the freeway. And the prompt statement was exactly that. Um, we are planning probably in this area between the Frye's site, Elephant Bar and a few others, about fifteen to two thousand housing units. And they are all within a half mile distance of the light rail station. But of course, you take your life in your hands anytime you try and cross that freeway intersection. So the prompt statement is to think of either A, improvements to the bridge itself and the crosswalks, or B, the, the moonshot uh, proposal would be to contemplate either a new bridge or, or expansion of that bridge to allow bike predac- bike ped access to the light rail station. Uh, so that's point number one. Point number two, wanted to give good news to the planning commission. So we had, uh, delivered back to HCD our housing element for review as a Christmas present. They have until the end of February to give us comments. Uh, they reached out to us this week and wanted to give us some verbal feedback and we had a, a conversation with them today. So overall, uh, they had, the reviewers had a lot of glowing, glowing things about our housing element. I'll, I'll read you verbatim some of the initial quotes, which was, uh, good and throw job. Really, really pleased and among the best that we've seen. Uh, assuming best, he's, not only he's reviewed other housing elements, uh, so. But, uh, and there's a, there's a list of about, uh, a handful, uh, things that they're still asking the city to modify. And nothing, it's dramatically heavy lifting, but, uh, overall, they, uh, did underline that they're very impressed with our housing element. And they've actually suggested that the city apply, apply for a pro-housing designation, which is something we can later discuss between the commission and council. It allows for more favorable ranking if we apply for funding. So, so good kudos from HCD.
That is excellent news.
And then last but not least, uh, just a calendaring item. Thank you all for responding to the polling item on February fourteenth. It is Valentine's Day. Hope you haven't made plans for dinner. Uh, we are, uh, planned to start early. So you have enough time to look at our objective standards and provide recommendations to council. And then, uh, the, the big shebang, um, which is consideration and recommendation to council on adoption of the general plan housing element. Objective standards, comprehensive zoning update with a certified EIR. Uh, we are targeting at this point, the week of March thirteenth. You do have a normal meeting that week, um, but it's likely you'll need a special meeting, uh, just to consider all those items together. So if you do get a chance, uh, take a look at that week. Ken and I will reach out to you in the next few weeks and ask, uh, Pauline for the, the best day. But, um, just want to put it on your radar that that's likely the week we'll be bringing all of those items back to you for the final, uh, review and recommendation. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Um, did you have a question?
Yes, please. Well, to know if, um, for the Tuesday, the fourteenth, you will have excuse notes for our spouses while we're here now.
Happy to do so.
Right. Uh, with that, I will adjourn to the, uh, next scheduled meeting of February the fourteenth.